Okay guys, we're gonna do this. It's that time. Okay. Here we go. This meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have your seats. Okay, our first order of business is the oath of office administered by Ms. Amy Matthews with C, C, H, and A. Ms. Matthews?
Would you mind going over by the...
Sure. I told them we'd probably be placed in an exact location.
That way we can... Have our viewers right there in front of the podium. Thank you.
Okay, how's that? All right, we want to make sure everyone here is gentlemen, so, good stuff. So if you could repeat after me, Chief, first. I, James Northington II...
I, James Northington II...
Do hereby promise...
Do hereby promise...
And swear...
And swear...
That I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
The duties of a Warren Township School Police Department Chief of Police...
The duties of a Warren Township School Police Officer, Chief of Police...
To wit, Warren Township Chief of Police.
To wit, Warren Township Chief of Police.
Further, I, James Northington II, do solemnly swear...
Further, I, James Northington II, do solemnly swear...
I will support the Constitution...
I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful...
And bear allegiance...
And bear allegiance...
To the state of Indiana...
To the state of Indiana...
The county of Marion...
The county of Marion...
City of Indianapolis...
The city of Indianapolis...
And the Metropolitan School District...
And the Metropolitan School District...
Of Warren Township Schools...
Of Warren Township Schools...
I will support the Constitution...
I will support the Constitution...
And laws thereof...
And laws thereof...
I will...
I will...
To the best of my skill and judgment...
To the best of my skill and judgment...
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully...
Without prejudice...
Without prejudice...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
For the office...
For the office...
Of Chief of Police...
Of Chief of Police...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Thank you, sir. And if you could remain up front and then we'll sign things in a moment. Next, we will have Lieutenant Calvert. If you could repeat after me, you've had a exemplar here, so... I, Aaron Calvert...
I, Aaron Calvert...
Do hereby promise...
Do hereby promise...
And swear...
And swear...
That I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
The duties...
The duties...
Of a Warren Township...
Of a Warren Township...
School Police Department Officer to wit...
School Police Department Officer to wit...
Warren Township School Police Officer.
Warren Township School Police Officer.
I, Aaron Calvert...
I, Aaron Calvert...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
I will support...
I will support...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful...
And bear allegiance...
And bear allegiance...
To the state of Indiana...
To the state of Indiana...
The county of Marion...
The county of Marion...
City of Indianapolis...
City of Indianapolis...
And the Metropolitan School District...
And the Metropolitan School District...
Of Warren Township Schools...
Of Warren Township Schools...
I will support the Constitution...
I will support the Constitution...
And laws thereof...
And laws thereof...
I will...
I will...
To the best of my skill and judgment...
To the best of my skill and judgment...
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully...
Without prejudice...
Without prejudice...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
For the office of Police Officer...
For the office of Police Officer...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Thank you, sir. And last but not least, Officer Fuller. I, Albert Fuller...
I, Albert Fuller...
Do hereby promise...
Do hereby promise...
And swear...
And swear...
That I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
The duties...
The duties...
Of a Warren Township School Police Department Officer...
Of a Warren Township School Police Officer...
To wit, Warren Township School Police Officer.
To wit, Warren Township School Police Officer.
I, Albert Fuller...
I, Albert Fuller...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
I will support the Constitution...
I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful...
And bear allegiance...
And bear allegiance...
To the state of Indiana...
To the state of Indiana...
The county of Marion...
The county of Marion...
City of Indianapolis...
City of Indianapolis...
And the Metropolitan School District...
And the Metropolitan School District...
Of Warren Township Schools...
Of Warren Township Schools...
I will support...
I will support...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
And laws thereof...
And laws thereof...
I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully...
Without prejudice...
Without prejudice...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
For the office of Police Officer...
For the office of Police Officer...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Thank you.
Gentlemen, could you come this way, please? Before you leave, we'd like to shake your hands. Okay, very good, very good, very good. Okay, our next order of business is business of citizens present. Do we have any green cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, good. Next order of business is the election of board officers conducted by Ms. Amy Matthews. And when you're ready, we're ready.
All right. We will start with item 4.01, nomination of President. Oh, you need me out of my...
Just miss her at home viewers.
I didn't want to lose my paperwork up there. And that's where my stamp went. That was my other.
All right, let's try this again. I'm being heard now. Item 4.01, nomination of President. I am facilitating the reorganization meeting as this is a requirement annually for every school board in Indiana, under Indiana law, that they elect officers. And one of the ways that that can be done is by the school attorney facilitating that process, so that's what we're doing now. Starting with, again, 4.01, nomination of President, so I would open the floor for a board member to make a nomination for your president.
I would like to nominate LaShawna Triplet as President of the Board for year 2024.
Okay, there's a motion for a nomination. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, whoever won that race, there was a second? Okay, and is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, I would call a vote, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, you have a president. Congratulations. Then your next item is nomination of Vice President. I would open the floor for nominations, a motion to nominate one of the board members for Vice President.
I, LaShawna Triplet, nominate Rachel Burke as Vice President.
Is there a second? There's a nomination motion?
Second.
And a second? Is there any discussion? Okay, we will call for a vote on that motion for nomination of Vice President. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That motion carries you have a Vice President. Congratulations and thank you. And finally, your third elected officer is Secretary, so I would open the floor for nominations for Secretary.
I would like to nominate Terry Amos.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, and you have a Secretary. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to assist you and I congratulate again the new officers.
Thank you.
At this point, we need to have appointments made, and I give way to the new President of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey, for that. Thank you, Board, for electing me as the President. I'm here to serve my community and the school district to the best of my ability. I would be remiss to also acknowledge my wonderful parents that are here, supporting me. Without them, I would not be here, so thank you, and definitely my husband, because I don't want to owe him a suit, so, thank you, Richard as well. At this time, I would like to ask the Board to accept my appointment recommendations for Legislative Liaison, ISBA Policy Liaison and Representative to the WAVE. For the appointment of the Legislative Liaison, I would like Julie French to remain that person to represent us. For appointment for the ISBA Policy Liaison, I would like Rachel Burke to remain our Policy Liaison. And for the Representative of WAVE, I would like myself, LaShawna Triplet, to remain as the WAVE representative. So at this time, I would like to ask the Board, is there any opposing to those appointments? Thank you. The next item on the list is establishing our meeting 6.0, our dates, time, and place. At the organizational meeting of the Board of Education, the board meeting dates, times, and place are established for the following year. See the recommendations for 2024. I will read the dates and then I will ask for a motion. All of the board meetings will begin at 7:00 PM in the boardroom at the Warren Education and Community Center located at 975 North Post Road and streamline online. School board agendas and minutes can be viewed on the board docs website through the MSD Warren Township website at wwwwarren.k12.in.us. The dates are as read, February 21st, 2024, March 20th, 2024, April 17th, 2024, May 15th, 2024, June 12th, 2024, July 17th, 2024, August 21st, 2024, September 18th, 2024, October 23rd, 2024, November 20th, 2024, December 18th, 2024, January 15th, 2025. I will note for the record, one abstract on June 12th, 2024, that is a second Wednesday, and two abstracts on October 23rd, 2024, that is the fourth Wednesday. I will entertain a motion for acceptance of those dates.
So moved.
I'll second.
It has been properly moved by Rachel Burke and second by Terry Amos. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, time for the vote. Ready. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to the next agenda item is 7.0, Conflict of Interest. All of the board members in your folders, you should have received a form for the conflict of interest. The purpose of this form for our gallery and those who are viewing online is to disclose anything that may be a conflict of interest. The state of Indiana states that if we declare a conflict, it is no longer a conflict. So this document is very important, so please, if you're able to sign it and get it into Kim so she can get that filed today, we would greatly appreciate it, but please have it in no later than our next board meeting. Are there any questions? We will move on to our next item on our agenda, 8.0, Establishing Yearly Stipends and Perdiems. 8.01, Board members currently receive a stipend of $2,000 per year for their service. In addition, they may receive a meeting per diem of $112 for regular board meetings and $62 for special meetings. Executive sessions, meeting of committees established by the Board or attendance at national or state school board events. In addition, board members attending national or state school board events, including an overnight stay, will receive a per diem meal expense payment of $35 per day in lieu of meal reimbursement. That is Resolution 622.24. I will entertain a motion. It has been properly moved by Gloria Williams and second by Howard Dorsey. Time for discussion. Seeing no questions, we can call a vote. Seeing no questions, we can call a vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is 9.0. We will turn, I'll turn this over to Dr. Hanson, and that is to assign for our treasurer and deputy treasurer.
Thank you, President Triplet. The school board must appoint a treasurer who may not be a member of the board nor the superintendent of schools. The board must also appoint a deputy treasurer to act in the absence of the treasurer. The recommendation is to appoint Matthew Parkinson as treasurer and Lisa Hedge as deputy treasurer.
So moved.
I'll second.
It has been properly moved by Julie French and second by Terry Amos. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Hanson. Next on the agenda is you as well, Dr. Hanson.
Yes, the school board needs to appoint attorney of record. Attorney of record. The recommendation is to appoint Church, Church, Hiddle, and Antrim.
So moved.
I have a second.
I'll second.
It has been properly moved by Julie French and second by Terry Amos, that we accept the recommendation coming from Dr. Hanson for Church, Church, Hiddle, and Antrim. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. That motion passes unanimously. We will go into the next item on our agenda, and that is 11.0, and Dr. Hanson, it's you again, for our superintendent's report.
Three in a row. Well, first of all, I want to say happy 2024 to everyone, really excited for this year. Just a few updates since we met in December. We are continuing to move forward with our JOG 2.0 skills in visuals. We are currently in the process of collecting feedback and narrowing that down to three visual drafts. We hope to have that final draft visual here in the next several weeks. On Monday, I participated in the first meeting of the Marion County Public Department Community Health Advisory Committee at IUPUI, led by Dr. Kane. Community leaders across multiple sectors were present, including MLT and LaShawna Triplet. This process will lead to a new five-year community health plan for Marion County, so nice to be a part of that conversation. Our annual legislative forum will be Saturday, February 3rd, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM here at central office. That is one weekend later than we normally hold it, so just note that. Couple superintendent spotlights, I want to congratulate our fantastic four girls wrestlers who will be competing in the state competition this Friday in Kokomo. They are Rihanna Benson, Amina Rosunenuko Taylor, Akila Rosunenuko Taylor, and Jasmine Hollands Rowi. So congratulations to those four ladies, and we wish them luck in the tournament. The IDOE this year is granting a literacy, is awarding a literacy grant to schools across the state, and if you will allow me to read off their criteria here for a minute. The criteria for the grant allocation is the number of students who participated in IREED-3 testing for the 2023 school year, so last school year, the number of eligible students who achieved a passing score on that IREED-3 test, both for spring and summer, the district's or the school's complexity index, if you remember, that is free and reduced foster McKinney-Vento students, the school's growth and reading proficiency rate, the number of eligible students receiving special education services, the district's enrollment count, the number of eligible English learner or multilingual students. I'm happy to say that Warren Township received the second highest amount in the state, $224,000. We were $5,000 behind Carmel. I'll have those numbers to you, I'll share those with you in terms of Marion County peers. Really proud of the work that we're doing around IREED-3. This validates that work. We are working on that process right now of how we will distribute that to all of our elementary school teachers and staff. The grant itself is written for K-3 teachers. We are working hard to identify how we can somehow acknowledge and award all of our staff members in those buildings and one online. I'll share that information with you here shortly. Board, I would like to finish my report this evening by thanking you for your investment in our students and staff, your advocacy for public education, and your vision to make MSD Warren Township an exemplary district, not only in the city, but the state and nationally. And I have my helpers who are going to pass out something for you. In honor of School Board Appreciation Month, it is my pleasure to recognize our MSD Warren Township school board members, Terry Amos, Rachel Burke, Howard Dorsey, Julie French, Kevin Humphrey, LaShawna Triplet, and Gloria Williams, for their board service and leadership to the MSD Warren Township District and Eastside Community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson, and these are beautiful. Next on our agenda, moving right along, is our 13.0, and it is our zero, is our, I'm sorry, 12.0 is our board correspondence.
We have no correspondence.
Thank you. Secretary Amos. The next on our agenda is 13.0 is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, it covers 13.01, approval of minutes, 13.02, our financial report, payroll claim, 13.03, our financial report, our claim register, and electronic payments, 13.04, financial report, year-to-date summary of fund balances, 13.05, human resource report, 13.06, supplement personnel report, 13.07, our field trip request, WCC robotics for trips, WCHS, our Japanese seniors, WCHS varsity boys wrestling, 13.08, permission to accept gifts/grants, Warren youth basketball, 13.09, our change orders for Project East Ridge and Warren Central Phase 2, 13.10, contracts, we have none, 13.11, use of school property, Warren Central Youth Basketball, Warren Youth Boys Basketball, Indiana State Wrestling Association, Music for All, we have the Performing Arts, and our prep network, 13.12, special events, 13.13, conflict of interest. May we accept this consent agenda by consent?
So moved.
Any discussion? Can we accept this by consent? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, we will, I'll turn it, Kim did it, we accepted by consent, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is reports, 14.01, our legislative update by Ms. Julie French.
I just want to reiterate the January, or I'm sorry, the February 4th Legislative Forum, 3rd, 3rd Saturday Legislative Forum, and I've been looking at the bills that are out there. It's going to be a much calmer year. There are still things out there we need to keep our eye on, there's a few reading bills out there we need to pay attention to. There are some sexual, human sexuality bills out there, athletic ones, which kind of, there's House Bill 1344, which is a cash option to pay at the games, which I'm not sure we do that right now, so we'll have to keep our eye on that one. And then there's also an expulsion and suspension, there's two of them actually, a expulsion and expansion, and they're both ways. One is more restrictive and one is less restrictive, so it'd be interesting to see what happens. Cell phone bans, a lot of these are aimed towards the students this year versus the teachers and the adults and stuff. There's, I think, at least three cellphone bans out there, some teacher licensing, and let's see, and there's handwriting, so there's, it's just really a different, going to be a different year. Even though the bills are out there, we still have one more day for some of them to show up, and then after that, we have to watch for amendments, because they will throw in anything as we go, so we need to make sure and keep our eye on that. But I just want to get you an idea of what some of this was right now, and we'll hear more next month as we get moving.
Thanks, Julie. Do we have, next is, on our agenda is business of citizens present, do we have any yellow cards?
President Triplet, we do not.
Next up, we will have Mr. Nat, and he knows he is ready. Our bid recommendation for Creston.
Good evening, President Triplet and members of the board. This evening, for your consideration, we have a recommendation to accept a bid for a cooling tower project at Creston. So the cooling tower is one of the key parts of the HVAC infrastructure for air conditioning in the building. We advertised this in December, we received one bidder, but it's a bidder we've worked with in the past, who's qualified to do the work. The project's going to be partially funded out of Esser and partially funded out of our 2023 general obligation bonds. We have a bid recommendation letter, and so I would recommend to the board that we accept approval of the recommendation.
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It has been properly moved by Gloria Williams and second by Julie French. Do we have any discussion, questions? Call a vote. For the record, can you also just tell us how that was publicized, just, you know, so people can know where to kind of find where our bids are?
Sure, sure. We published it on consecutive Fridays in the Indy Star and the IBJ, and most of the time when we're doing public advertising, we use those same two newspapers. It was, in this case, December 15th, December 22nd.
It moved off our screen, but from the record, I think that passed unanimously. There it is. We do not have any discussion items at this time. We will now go into our closing comments, and Ms. Williams, can I start with you?
I would like to say happy New Year to all of you, and I sincerely hope you enjoyed all of the holiday season, and I'm just so happy to be back at the beginning of the start of another year, and I am a positive thinker, so I'm going to say we're going to have a great year this year. I would like to, I'm happy to see our chief of police and our police officers that were sworn in, congratulations, and congratulations to our board officers that were sworn in, and I tell you, we're off to a good year. I am just really, really excited. Chartwell really fed us good today, and I'm in a good mood, and I just thank Chartwell for the nice Happy New Year gift also that they left for us. And also, you know, I just want to say that I'm thankful for all of Warren, because you guys are so supportive. Our attorney, you're always supportive of us, and I just want to say thank you. And there was something else I was going to say, I can't even think of, and now I forgot. But I'm going to end with that, but thanks to all of you for everything that you do, and again, I look forward to us having a great year today.
Kevin.
Well, some of you maybe noticed a pattern, I follow Gloria, and she pretty much says everything for me. But I would also like to welcome my new officers to the Warren family, and we're looking forward to working with you, and we've heard great things about each and every one of you, so again, welcome aboard, and we come into a new year, 2024, and likewise, I feel it's going to be a great year and exciting year, so I'm looking forward to working with everyone yet again, and we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Julie.
I like to say ditto to everything Kevin said, but also, with a new year comes a new robotics season and a new game, yay! Kickoff was Saturday, and we are on our way, and we have, we had a practice Friday, or Monday, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're here all day long, pretty much, so. So I will let you know when the competitions are, there's one in Plainfield that we're going to this year, close, relatively speaking, compared to where some of the other ones are, so I hope you will maybe come and check us out and see what it's about.
I am going to skip down to this and to Rachel.
First of all, I would like to congratulate you, President Triplet, I am so excited to work with you, and I am so happy that you are a new president, so congratulations. How absolutely wonderful for us that we get to have you to lead the district, so I wanted to say that. The game looks good for robotics this year, there are rings, and there are hundreds of them, and there will be chaos as always. Science Olympiad has gone well, so I wanted to, I drove a white bus for hours over the weekend, and I am, I have always been, and all of bus drivers who do what they do, particularly in inclement weather, now much, much more so, having done it on a much smaller basis in inclement weather, so keep those bus drivers, particularly this time of year, and your thoughts and prayers.
Congratulations. Just want to welcome everyone, your parents, nice to have your family to support you today. Welcome to our Warren, to our new officers. Just wanted to say, with the beginning of school this week, I want to be thankful for our bus drivers being ready to roll out. I saw a couple buses over break, and I thought, ugh, they're not really getting too much of a relaxation, but I'm glad they were ready to roll out on Monday. Want to wish all of our students and our teachers welcome back, and thank you to our custodian staff for having those buildings warm and ready to accept our kids.
Mr. Dorsey.
Well, congratulations. Our vice being the vice, congratulations to Terry, absolutely. We finished up 2023 strong, we're entering 2024 even stronger. Congratulations to the new slate of board officers. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, for the gifts. I am really excited about where we're going to be already in 2024, and your great leadership, so best of luck, and I think we're going to have a really good year. Happy New Year. Happy New Year, I get excited at this, knock stuff over, but Happy New Years to all of you. I want to I want to say to the staff for 2023, uh, you guys were just outstanding. And, uh, it was a great year, uh, but we're gonna have a better year in 2024.
I would just like to say to, uh, my board, uh, members that you all are amazing and awesome. I've learned so much under the leadership, and since I've been on the board, watching each and every one of you, your passions, um, and just the leadership and all, um, and how we are all so driven to make sure that our district is the best that it could possibly be. Mr. Dorsey, you took us through 2023. Rachel, you, I came on from COVID, and I remember you saying, "I was there when COVID started." LaShawn, I just want to get us through this next phase. And you brought us through. Julie, your wisdom is just there, deeply rooted. I appreciate it. Me and Kevin, we're, that knowledge and love that you have for the, um, you know, the district, that you know about the family of Ms. Gloria is Ms. Gloria. She's just, she's there. She loves her district. I appreciate it. Terry is just that quiet spirit, and, um, as an educator, we share that in common. Kim, none of this is possible without you. Dr. Hanson, I appreciate, every year I've been on the board, you've just become more visible and visible and visible. You take direction, whatever we say, you know, you just sit there and you're like, okay, I got you. You know, I appreciate that.
Watch your tummy.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that. Seeing you in the community at some of those community meetings, really, when Dr. Kane was able to see your face and know who you were, that meant something to me. Because I'm like, hey, that's my district, you know? That's my superintendent. So, I appreciate you caring about our district and our community that much. To his cabinet, thank you all. Marcus? Like, I appreciate everything you've been doing, trailblazing, you know? Everyone, um, in the cabinet. To our staff, take care of yourself. We're gonna go hard with mental health, making sure that we are supporting each other, um, through all of this. To our officers, to, um, our new Chief of Police, our Lieutenant, please let us know anything we can do to support you. MCRC is in the house. Mr. Taylor, thank you for all you do. Quill, Chartwells, thank you all. Our IT, I didn't give you guys any problems tonight. My computer is working, 2024 is starting off great. Just thank you all. Lamar, um, camera guy, just thank you, thank you, thank you. We just appreciated of everything that you all have done. I won't be like Ms. Gloria, I'm gonna cut my, went over my five, my five minutes, so, nope, I'm, I'm done. So, our meeting is adjourned, and for those of you, um, this meeting is adjourned. We have to wait to eight o'clock to start our, um, Board of Finance meeting, but you are at this time released from this meeting. Thank you.
I will now call our Board of Finance meeting to order, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, President Triplet, members of the board. This evening, we have our annual January Board of Finance meeting. And so I'm going to provide a brief overview of what the Board of Finance is and what we're doing this evening. And then we'll, we'll be going through a series of reports. So every local government unit in the state, including school corporations, has what's known as a Board of Finance. The Board of Finance for school corporations has the specific duties of hearing reports on school corporation investments and fiscal indicators. And then we're also going to cover a six-month summary of referendum progress. And so President Triplet, if it's okay with you, I'm just going to kind of run down through the agenda items one by one.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and so the first item that we have, like with any public meeting, is a public comment. And so President Triplet, if it's okay with you, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Yes.
Okay. The next task is election of the president and election of the secretary of the Board of Finance. The board's past practice has been to use the same officers from the school board for the Board of Finance. So that would be my recommendation, but it's certainly the board's prerogative to make choices as they so.
I'd like to make a motion that we have LaShana Triplet as president and Terry Amos as secretary.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Julie French and seconded by Rachel Burke that LaShana Triplet is the president of the Board of Finance and Rachel Burke is, I mean, I'm sorry, and Terry Amos is the secretary for the Board of Finance. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a vote? That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Do we, do we need to vote, vote on the secretary or was that for both of them?
We did both.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members, our first report of the evening is report on investments. So during this report, I'm going to cover our investment earnings from calendar year 2023, along with where we keep our, our cash. And I do want to take just a minute while we're going through this one to talk about 2023 is a really unique year for interest earnings relative to other recent years. So everything we do with the Board of Finance is part of the board's goal to ensure financial wellness, investing in people and efficiencies and environment with interest earnings in particular. This report's required by Indiana Code 51377. We report on this each year. So this is for the calendar year that we just completed at the end of December. And I'm calling that out specifically because the next report we do is going to be a year in arrears. But, but this one's for the 12 months that we just finished in, in December. Board members, I've placed on the screen the interest earnings that we had in calendar year 2023 and the funds to which it were deposited. As a, as a general philosophy, we redeposit money back into the fund from which the, the cash was earned. So as you can see, we had nearly $2.8 million in interest earnings this past year. So this is the slide that I wanted to spend just kind of an extra minute on that, that really is a significant change from anything we've had in recent memory. So we've, for years, I mean, for, for a decade, had effectively zero interest rates. So we weren't paying much in interest on, on loans and debt, but we weren't earning anything on interest either. Late in 2022 and then throughout calendar year 2023, interest rates went up significantly. And so our interest earnings have gone up quite a bit as well. So two years ago, when we did this report, it was $43,000. Last year, it was $231,000. This year, it's $2.8 million. Now, I will say, I'm going to go back one slide. This is partially influenced by construction funds. So you'll notice that in the 0740 to 0780 series, these are the bond funds that are funding the renovations of, of Grassy Creek and Pleasant Run, the high school, East Ridge Hawthorne. There's some additional interest earnings because we have extra cash while we're doing those projects. And so in a normal cycle, our interest earnings will be down slightly. But the biggest change by far has been the increase in interest rates. And so I, I just want to point out that interest rates are up and we're doing well on interest earnings. If interest rates go back down, and, and I think there's kind of a, a common line of thinking that interest rates are likely to decline this calendar year, we can expect our interest earnings to, to decline in a correlating manner. In terms of the investment policy, the school board has an investment policy. It's Policy 6144. Essentially, our, our task is to maximize earnings in very, very safe vehicles. So items that are FDIC insured or with traditional banks, US Treasury notes backed by the full faith and credit of the, the US government. We keep our cash and investments in three different financial institutions. The majority is with Fifth Third. We also have money that we hold with Everwise. That's formerly Teachers Credit Union. Board, you'll recall that that was something you authorized in early 2023, and so that's where our rainy day fund resides today. And then we have a portion of our cash in Trust Indiana, which is a quasi-government agency affiliated with the Treasurer of State's Office. Our, what we're going to do in 2024 is we're going to continue to conservatively invest our excess cash in, in forms that are, that are safe, but that generate interest earnings that we can pour back into our programs. Board members, that's my investment report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay. The other report required by statute is the annual fiscal indicators report. So this report is four or five years old. The, there's a, a state committee that establishes fiscal indicators on which school corporations are measured. And so I'm going to report to you how we do on those measures. Same board goal, same strategic plan focus area. This report's required by 51378. We report on this annually. And again, what I want to point out is this is a year in arrears. So this is data ending on December 31st, 2022. So we've got more than 12 months' time that have passed since the data in this report. The first key metric is average daily membership. Our ADM over the years, the last several years, has been stable. Stable this year as well. We were just south of 11,400. So we strive for stable enrollment. This is the biggest factor in our state funding. One, one item that I've put on here to point out is, is school choice plays a big role, both for and against us when it comes to ADM. On a net, we have more students who leave MSD Warren Township than students who come to MSD Warren Township. A portion of those are, are students who take vouchers and attend private schools. A portion of those are kids that go to other public school districts and then students that attend charter schools. We also have about 1,000 students that live out of district that attend MSD Warren Township. Large majority of those come from center township or IPS boundaries and end up in, in Warren Township. But that, that's been a stabilizing force for us when it comes to, to our enrollment, has been the presence of those out-of-district students. And when we get to our SWOT analysis at the end, I'm going to talk for just a moment about the potential threat that's there when it comes to, to out-of-district students. Fund balances is the second metric. So I'm, I'm focusing on our primary funds. And in the full report, the, the, the state metric is on all funds. It's not, in an honest moment, it's not a very useful number, the state's report. I think what I'm presenting to you is much more useful. The reason the state number is not nearly as useful is we're going to see large increases in cash when we do a building project. And then we're going to rapidly spend that cash down. And we've been doing that for the last few years. And so instead, I'm calling to your attention what I'm calling the primary funds. So that's education, operations, debt service, operating referendum, and rainy day. In calendar year 2020, we had $20.5 million. Calendar year 2021, we saw a dip, $16.2 million. The majority of that was a decrease in our debt service fund, and that was because we were no longer eligible for protected taxes waiver, which is a provision in state law pertaining to, to circuit breaker credits. In calendar year 2022, our cash balance rebounded to essentially where we were at the end of calendar year 2020. In the same way, we've got the annual deficit surplus. So the numbers at the top are for all funds, which, which again is, is, in my opinion, not overly useful because of the influence of construction funds. The metric that I recommend we really focus on is annual surplus or deficit for our primary funds. In 2021, we had a decrease of 4.7 million, again, mostly in debt service. Last year, our primary funds increased about $3.7 million. I've got those amounts broken out by fund here. The big increase was in the education fund with a modest increase in debt service. In that calendar year, we had a decrease in operations and in operating referendum. A lot of the SIR, a lot of the, the education increase is a function of offsetting costs in SIR that provide some savings for the education fund. The fourth metric on which we're measured is fund balances as a percentage of operating revenues, or excuse me, operating expenditures. So this is a way of, if we're thinking about this in personal finance terms, this is kind of the portion of your annual expenditures that you have in the bank at any given time. At the end of calendar year 2022, we had 15.8%. So this is healthy financially for us to, to grow our fund balances. We have specific targets for each of our individual funds. We're there at this point on the education fund, so that's 12% of expenditures. And then operations and operating referendum have less stable revenues. So we get a large influx of revenues when property taxes come in, and then we'll go months without significant revenues, and then a large influx again. So the goal for those two funds is to keep cash, is to keep the fund balance above zero in between property tax distributions. Metric five that the state designates is revenue by type. Our largest revenue is state revenue, and over the periods measured here, we, we have seen healthy growth in state revenue. So in calendar year 2020, we were at just shy of 89 million, and calendar year 2022, a little bit shy of $98 million. We've got local taxes, which are primarily property taxes, operating referendum. The debt, again, we're going to see that really large variance, and the reason is in 2021, we sold bonds to fund our Phase Two renovations. And then the other key one I want to point out is the one in the bottom right corner, which is federal stimulus. So in calendar year 2022, that's when we saw our first kind of really large influx of, of SIR money. When we do this report again next year, we're going to see the same thing. And then in 2024, that'll be the last year we see meaningful numbers in that category. But that, that's certainly played a, played a role in our, our revenues as a school district in the last couple of years. So I've got, I've got commentary along the same, the same lines right here. Our revenue has been stable, modest growth. We've, we've been in a good place as far as revenue goes. And then finally, the last category that the state designates is operating referendum revenue as a percentage of total revenue. We've been stable here as well between three point, between 3% and 3.8% over the three years measured. We're going to see a similar number next year on 2023. So board, as we'll recall, the community passed a referendum in 2023 at a new 30-cent tax rate. The previous tax rate was 21 cents. And so our, our referendum revenue as a percentage of our overall revenue is going to increase beginning in 2024. And really what this does, this, this underscores the importance of revenue by, a referendum by its nature is time limited. And so the day is going to come at the end of this referendum cycle where we're going to have to go back to the community and, and request community support again, or alternatively be prepared to, to cut about $11 million in expenditures. And finally, I want to just wrap up the, the fiscal indicators with, with the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis. So our, our strength is stability, and that really ties back primarily to our ADM. We've been fortunate to have stable ADM. Many of our peers in the county haven't been in the same boat, and so that's, that's been a blessing for us. A weakness that we have is, is the fund balance on our operations fund. So I didn't call it out specifically on the slides. Our operations fund is the one that we need to focus the most, the most on, on growing. We made really strong progress in calendar year 2023, and I anticipate we're going to do more of the same in calendar year 2024. Our opportunities, so I mentioned the education fund is essentially where we need it to be in terms of, of fund balance. We had a pretty aggressive year this year in terms of raising teacher and staff compensation. And that fund balance is going to position us as well as anything can next year, any year where we know state revenue is not going to increase by a lot. But that fund balance is going to play a role in, in letting us make moves next year. And then finally, I've put two threats on the screen for the board's consideration. One is, is threat number one. This has been a threat for the last couple of years, and that's, there are some costs in the operations fund that are really difficult to control for. In calendar year 2022, we, we were subject to some difficulties on utility prices in summer and fall of 2022 on gas prices and diesel prices. Fortunately for us, in calendar year 2023, those items have stabilized. And we haven't seen price decreases across the board, but we're at least not seeing the increases that we were before. Should we see inflation pick back up, especially in the non-personnel space, the operations fund is really where we're going to feel that pinch. And then the other threat I, I placed on here is again, school choice. School choice is always going to be a factor moving forward. We, we recognize that's part of our reality. Families have options. We have families in MSD Warren who don't send their students to MSD Warren schools. We have families outside of the district who do choose to send their, their students to MSD Warren schools. Stable enrollment is one of the most important things we can do to have a sound financial picture. And so we always have to remain cognizant of what our enrollment looks like and what our out-of-district enrollment looks like. Lot of numbers, I recognize that. Board members, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say, you do an amazing job at keeping us fiscally sound, and I, I do appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to say ditto to that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
And I think it's always good, thank you for doing that SWOT analysis, because it's always good to know the strengths and our threats as well, because it helps keeps everything balanced.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. So the last item I've got, board, this is not one that's required by statute, but it's one that we're going to plan on doing every six months. And that's just an update on the referendum fund, just as an awareness piece for the community, for the board, for, for the folks that are watching the board meeting. So really, the referendum honestly hits every single school board, the, because of the nature of what we're doing with the referendum fund. I mean, there, there's honestly nothing in our school district that isn't either directly or indirectly impacted by the presence of the operating referendum. And the same is true of strategic plan focus area. We, for us, as you'll recall, when we had our referendum message to the community, a part that we were really keen on emphasizing was we weren't asking for luxury items. These were the basics to run a school district, and we really believe that. And I think that's evident in what we're spending our referendum dollars on. So just a reminder on, on referendum timeline here in MSD Warren Township. In the spring of 2018, the community initially approved an operating referendum. We collected property tax dollars on those, on that referendum between the years 2019 and 2023 and invested it into our programs. Last year, we asked for the community's support on a repeal and replace operating referendum. And so when the community approved that, we repealed the 2018 referendum. And then now effective January 1st, 2024, we have our 2023 referendum in place, and it'll be in place for the next eight years through 2031. In Indiana, school districts are allowed to run three types of referenda. A lot of our peers have run capital referenda. That's for building projects. We've cho, we've made the decision to fund our building projects inside of the caps. We've never run a school safety referendum. Few school districts have. That's, that's a relatively new one. We've only run an operating referendum, and we've done it two times. So when we asked the community for support, at last spring, when we asked the board to adopt a budget, we adopted a budget of just over $11 million for the operating referendum. Keep in mind, board, that our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. And so as we do this update right now, this is a half year's worth of data. We have an $11 million budget, and we've spent about $4.9 million, million dollars. And that's by design, and I'm going to get into the individual line items. In particular, I want to talk about technology when we get to that point. So again, the fiscal year runs from July 2023 through And in the full report, the, the, the state metric is on all funds. It's not, in an honest moment, it's not a very useful number, the state's report. I think what I'm presenting to you is much more useful. The reason the state number is not nearly as useful is we're going to see large increases in cash when we do a building project and then we're going to rapidly spend that cash down. And we've been doing that for the last few years. And so instead, I'm calling to your attention what I'm calling the primary funds. So that's education, operations, debt service, operating referendum and rainy day. In calendar year 2020, we had $20.5 million. Calendar year 2021, we saw a dip, $16.2 million. The majority of that was a decrease in our debt service fund. And that was because we were no longer eligible for protected taxes waiver, which is a provision in state law pertaining to, to circuit breaker credits. In calendar year 2022, our cash balance rebounded to essentially where we were at the end of calendar year 2020. In the same way, we've got the annual deficit surplus. So the numbers at the top are for all funds, which, which again is, is, in my opinion, not overly useful because of the influence of construction funds. The metric that I recommend we really focus on is annual surplus or deficit for our primary funds. In 2021, we had a decrease of 4.7 million, again, mostly in debt service. Last year, our primary funds increased about $3.7 million. I've got those amounts broken out by fund here. The big increase was in the education fund with a modest increase in debt service. In that calendar year, we had a decrease in operations and in operating referendum. A lot of the S R, a lot of the, the education increase is a function of offsetting costs in S R that provide some savings for the education fund. The fourth metric on which we're measured is fund balances as a percentage of operating revenues, or excuse me, operating expenditures. So this is a way of, if we're thinking about this in personal finance terms, this is kind of the portion of your annual expenditures that you have in the bank at any given time. At the end of calendar year 2022, we had 15.8%. So this is healthy financially for us to, to grow our fund balances. We have specific targets for each of our individual funds. We're there at this point on the education fund, so that's 12% of expenditures. And then operations and operating referendum have less stable revenues. So we get a large influx of revenues when property taxes come in. And then we'll go months without significant revenues and then a large influx again. So the goal for those two funds is to keep cash, is to keep the fund balance above zero in between property tax distributions. Metric five that the state designates is revenue by type. Our largest revenue is state revenue. And over the periods measured here, we, we have seen healthy growth in state revenue. So in calendar year 2020, we were at just shy of 89 million. And calendar year 2022, a little bit shy of $98 million. We've got local taxes, which are primarily property taxes, operating referendum. The debt, again, we're going to see that really large variance. And the reason is in 2021, we sold bonds to fund our phase-two renovations. And then the other key one I want to point out is the one in the bottom right corner, which is federal stimulus. So in calendar year 2022, that's when we saw our first kind of really large influx of, of S R money. When we do this report again next year, we're going to see the same thing. And then in 2024, that'll be the last year we see meaningful numbers in that category. But that, that's certainly played a, played a role in our, our revenues as a school district in the last couple of years. So I've got, I've got commentary along the same, the same lines right here. Our revenue has been stable, modest growth. We've, we've been in a good place as far as revenue goes. And then finally, the last category that the state designates is operating referendum revenue as a percentage of total revenue. We've been stable here as well between three point, between 3% and 3.8% over the three years measured. We're going to see a similar number next year on 2023. So board, as we'll recall, the community passed a referendum in 2023 at a new 30-cent tax rate. The previous tax rate was 21 cents. And so our ref, our referendum revenue as a percentage of our overall revenue is going to increase beginning in 2024. And really what this does, this, this underscores the importance of our revenue by, a referendum by its nature is time limited. And so the day is going to come at the end of this referendum cycle where we're going to have to go back to the community and, and request community's support again, or alternatively be prepared to, to cut about $11 million in expenditures. Finally, I want to just wrap up the, the fiscal indicators with, with the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis. So our, our strength is stability and that really ties back primarily to our ADM. We've been fortunate to have stable ADM. Many of our peers in the county haven't been in the same boat and so that's, that's been a blessing for us. A weakness that we have is, is the fund balance on our operations fund. So I didn't call it out specifically on the slides. Our operations fund is the one that we need to focus the most, the most on, on growing. We made really strong progress in calendar year 2023. And I anticipate we're going to do more of the same in calendar year 2024. Our opportunities, so I mentioned the education fund is essentially where we needed to be in terms of, of fund balance. We had a pretty aggressive year this year in terms of raising teacher and staff compensation. And that fund balance is going to position us as well as anything can next year in a year where we know state revenue is not going to increase by a lot. But that fund balance is going to play a role in, in letting us make moves next year. And then finally, I've put two threats on the screen for the board's consideration. One is, is threat number one. This has been a threat for the last couple of years. And that's, there are some costs in the operations fund that are really difficult to control for. In calendar year 2022, we, we were subject to some difficulties on utility prices in summer and fall of 2022 on gas prices and diesel prices. Fortunately for us, in calendar year 2023, those items have stabilized. Now, we haven't seen price decreases across the board, but we're at least not seeing the increases that we were before. Should we see inflation pick back up, especially in the non-personnel space? The operations fund is really where we're going to feel that pinch. And then the other threat I, I placed on here is again, school choice. School choice is always going to be a factor moving forward. We, we recognize it's part of our reality. Families have options. We have families in MSD Warren who don't send their students to MSD Warren schools. We have families outside of the district who do choose to send their, their students to MSD Warren schools. Stable enrollment is one of the most important things we can do to have a sound financial picture. And so we always have to remain cognizant of what our enrollment looks like and what our out-of-district enrollment looks like. Lot of numbers, I recognize that. Board members, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say, you do an amazing job at keeping us fiscally sound. And I, I do appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to say ditto to that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
And I think it's always good. Thank you for doing that SWOT analysis because it's always good to know the strengths and our threats as well because it helps keeps everything balanced.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. So the last item I've got, board, this is not one that's required by statute, but it's one that we're going to plan on doing every six months. And that's just an update on the referendum fund, just as an awareness piece for the community, for the board, for, for the folks that are watching the board meeting. So really, the referendum honestly hits every single school board the, because of the nature of what we're doing with the referendum fund. I mean, there, there's honestly nothing in our school district that isn't either directly or indirectly impacted by the presence of the operating referendum. And the same is true of strategic plan focus area. We, for us, as you'll recall, when we had our referendum message to the community, a part that we were really keen on emphasizing was we weren't asking for luxury items. These were the basics to run a school district. And we really believe that. And I think that's evident in what we're spending our referendum dollars on. So just a reminder on, on referendum timeline here in MSD Warren Township. In the spring of 2018, the community initially approved an operating referendum. We collected property tax dollars on those, on that referendum between the years 2019 and 2023 and invested it into our programs. Last year, we asked for the community's support on a repeal and replace operating referendum. And so when the community approved that, we repealed the 2018 referendum. And then now effective January 1st, 2024, we have our 2023 referendum in place. And it'll be in place for the next eight years through 2031. In Indiana, school districts are allowed to run three types of referenda. A lot of our peers have run capital referenda, that's for building projects. We've cho, we've made the decision to fund our building projects inside of the caps. We've never run a school safety referendum, few school districts have, it's, it's relatively new one. We've only run an operating referendum and we've done it two times. So when we asked the community for support, at last spring, when we asked the board to adopt a budget, we adopted a budget of just over $11 million for the operating referendum. Keep in mind, board, that our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. And so as we do this update right now, this is a half year's worth of data. We have an $11 million budget and we've spent about $4.9 million. And that's by design, and I'm going to get into the individual line items. And particularly, I want to talk about technology when we get to that point. So again, the fiscal year runs from July 20, 2023 through June 2024. Our first property tax collection at the 30 cent rate is going to be in May 2024. And I, I want to take just a moment to, to dwell on that point and explain its relevance to this conversation. With our fiscal year beginning last July and us not collecting our new property tax money at this rate until May, which means it'll be distributed to us primarily in June of 2024, we've been running our 20, fiscal year 2024 operating referendum budget on a combination of the revenue on the old rate, a portion of revenue on the new rate later this year, and then our existing fund balance. So we're deliberately spending down our operating referendum fund balance from June 30th, 2023. And we've been slow in, in rolling it out because we recognize we're not going to have that full revenue until the end of this fiscal year. So one of our five pillars was safety and security. The primary thing that safety and security pays for is almost all of our police costs here in the district. So school resource officers and school safety officers, wages and benefits are paid out of the operating referendum fund, security supplies, and we purchased classroom safety kits this fall. And those are paid out of the operating referendum fund as well. Year-to-date, we've spent $778,000 out of a $1.6 million budget, so we're, we're right on track. Retention and recruitment, professional development, family engagement, year-to-date expenditures just under $1.5 million. The biggest piece of this, so board, you'll recall, through your approval, we had a $2.50 stipend for our hourly support staff paid for out of S R. When the community approved the referendum, we continued that. And so the way we effectuated that was by raising everybody's base pay by $1.70. We got our minimum hourly support staff paid at 15, they're all above 15 now. And then for everybody who was here in, in the time period that we were paying staff out of S R, we continued that additional 80 cents. And so I just, I want to take a moment to point out the, the dollar impact this has for our individual employees. It's meaningful. So for our school year employees working eight hours a day, this $1.70 increase results in a pay raise of $2,600. And for those who were employed as of May 2023, where they're getting the $2.50, it's $3,600. For those who work more than the school year, it's, it's more. There's a couple of things we have to keep in mind about hourly support staff. One is, as you all know, they're absolutely critical to the education of our children. We're talking about bus drivers and custodians and instructional assistants and secretaries. I mean, folks that are hands-on with our kids that make a meaningful difference in their day-to-day lives. The second is for those positions, we face a lot of competition as employers. They have options for where they're going to work, especially at, at those pay ranges. And so this investment from the community, from the board, was critical to the retention efforts around, around those areas. We also have two of our MCRC staff that are paid out of this bucket within the operating referendum. And then beginning next year, as family engagement liaisons roll out of S R, they will be a piece of, of this bucket as well. Transportation, so transportation, bus driver aides, bus drivers and aides, wages and benefits. Right now, we're paying for 41 of our bus drivers and aides out of the operating referendum fund. So that's a really significant piece of our, of our staff. And again, a portion of that $1.70, $2.50 an hour is, is paid out of this bucket. Student and staff technology, so devices and software. This is the one that we are underneath what our original budget was. And again, that was by design, recognizing that we were going to have that six-month gap between when our fiscal year began and the year in which we were going to start collecting property tax revenue at the 30 cent rate. The technology bucket was the one that we decided to keep a little bit lower until we start collecting that additional revenue. We're paying for one more cycle of student devices out of S R money. And then beginning in fiscal year 2025, student devices move into the operating referendum fund to the tune of roughly $1.6 million. Student learning, college and career readiness and K-12 enrichment. This is essentially paying for all of our counselors at Warren Central, Stoney, Rook, Creston and Raymond Park. So that's 24 certified counseling positions. I want to point out the, the counselor to student ratio here in our student, in our school district. There was a fairly well-publicized report earlier in 2023 about desirable ratios and where Indiana school districts were at and where national school districts were at. And in, in Indiana, the average is 694 students to a counselor. Here in MSD Warren Township, it's 316 to a counselor. Our students need the support of our counselors and without the operating referendum fund, this type of ratio would be impossible. And then finally, I want to speak about our operating referendum fund balances. And so again, as I mentioned in the fiscal indicators report, our goal here is essentially to keep the fund balance above zero in between property tax cycles. Each six months, we're going to see a large distribution in June and in December, and then smaller distributions for the two months before. Those are from folks that have paid their property taxes in advance. But unlike the education fund, which has revenue coming in every month, and even to some extent, the operations fund, there's only meaningful revenue coming in two times per year with some smaller revenues the other two months. So by the time we get to the end of this fiscal year in May, we're probably going to see our fund balance somewhere in the $1 million range. And it'll come back up as we get our property tax money in the month of June. And then we'll see that kind of normalize next fiscal year as, at that point, we're on a budget that matches our anticipated revenues. We'll spend it down, 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 and then we'll get our property tax money pulling us right back up. We have information about the referendum on our website and we're going to plan to provide another update to the community and to the board in July 2024. Board members, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Don't see any questions, Matt, but I do think that providing that six-month referendum update is very important. And we appreciate Dr. Hanson and you and your ca, the cabinet for adding that to the agenda and being transparent with that.
Thank you. President Triplet, that was all that I have for the evening.
Thank you. It's time, there is no questions, and meeting is adjourned. We'll see.